Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. This is a meeting rescheduled from Monday, December 28th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu, Mary Alice?
Sorry about that, I was muted, I'm here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings of December 14th, 2020, and a special meeting on December 21st, 2020. Could I have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
By Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice, are there any corrections?
I didn't see any.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. I don't believe there are any additions to the agenda. I do want to note that we have two items on the agenda for tonight. One is resolution coming out of committee, and then I have an appointment to the civilian police review board. We don't have presentations scheduled. We'll move on to public input. And we'll start with Alan Max Axelrod.
Hi there, can you hear me? Video froze.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, great. Could you put up, thank you for putting on the clock. So, I wanted to start off with thanking members of the city council for signing on to the eviction letter that has been circulated. To date, there have been over 20 elected officials, or public officials, I should say more precisely, in our county who have signed on to this letter urging for Champaign County to do what it did back in March, and suspend evictions. I want to remind anybody who is worried about the realtor lobby that rent debt can be relieved, but labs cannot, which is a direct quote from the letter. If you haven't had the chance to review it, to my knowledge, it has been emailed out to everybody except for maybe the newest appointee, who I would like to follow up with. That said, I do want to say that people can see the clock that's on here. I'm going to provide 30 seconds for people to mute if they are not prepared to hear details about mental health and self-harm. I ask that you mute if you are not prepared to do that by 2 minutes and 30 seconds in there. I wish to bring up some content that is not easy. So, please, if you can, mute at least from 2 minutes and 30 seconds until the end of my comment. All right, so this weekend was especially trying for me, and it made me reflect upon how death by suicide in rural areas is much higher, actually, per capita than in metropolitan areas. An activist in McComb sent me a video, asking me to use my position as a white male to break down the interactions that she had for almost an hour with a police officer, trying to get him to just process a complaint, not necessarily one that would be accepted, but just to process a complaint. This person, the police officer, knew that this person was a survivor of trauma, and engaged in really dishonest and abusive behavior for the vast majority of that interview. Only about 30 minutes in or so did the officer then start to say things like, "I'm sorry", only apologizing three times in that entire discussion. And this has really harmed the activist in question, and I don't live anywhere near McComb. Why is it that somebody's reaching out to me, especially somebody who is politically well-connected? Why isn't it that other people in her community don't feel comfortable, as white men, to speak up about police brutality and police gaslighting in rural communities? The thing is that some sort of rough interactions that don't seem to be terribly offensive, they don't usually come off as something that should have an extraordinary consequence on a person. But when somebody has chronic trauma, it can actually be the difference between life and death. It's one of the reasons why maybe the city council changed the rules for public comment, maybe. But it also, again, emphasizes that because people come from small towns does not necessarily mean that they are going to be having positive relationships with the police. And it is one of the most unfortunate best-kept secrets in those communities. Please use rigor rather than assumptions when dealing with this issue, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hanson.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Christopher Hanson. Wanted to, I guess I'll start with the CPRB appointment item on your agenda. I kind of glanced at the little write-up that Mayor Marlin gave on Mr. Rice, and you know, it looks fine, with the exception that there seems to be no mention whatsoever about how or why this person might be interested in issues of civilian oversight of policing, or how or why they're qualified. And it's not so much that someone needs extensive qualifications to be on that board, but it would be nice if there was some mention to the public and to the council about why this person might care about issues of policing. So, I don't know, maybe this person will be great. I certainly hope the council asks about it. But more importantly, I hope the council asks why certain other people were not appointed to the CPRB. I'm aware that there were one or more applicants who have applied during a time when the mayor was making a big deal about how hard it was to keep or place members on boards and commissions. So I'm wondering why, when we do have applications for these positions that are hard to fill, why those applicants are sometimes not chosen? And I think the council will find the answers to that question, those questions, much more interesting than why the mayor did choose someone. So I think you should ask why the mayor didn't choose certain people, and look into that. And I think, I think the city really needs a change in this regard, so that the council is much more involved in overseeing that application process. I mean, I think the mayor appoints some 150 different board and commission members, and a couple dozen different staff and administrative positions. And this council, at least that I've seen, basically just goes along with pretty much everything. It almost doesn't seem to matter at all how qualified someone is if the mayor, you know, puts an appointment forth, you guys vote for it. And very rarely do you ask any questions. So I think we need to look at changing that going forward, so that the council is more involved. Let's see, let me just check your agenda here. I think I'll wait to speak at the next meeting about the other, other issues. So I'll end it there, thank you.
Next up is Jaya Colasetti. Apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Pretty close, it's Jaya Colasetti. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My pronouns are she, her, and hers, and I am a Ward 4 Urbana resident. I wanted to briefly speak to the concerns that have been raised regarding the One Door program. I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this effort, but I think it's important to reinforce some of the concerns that other residents have already raised. First and foremost, it does not address the root issue of racial inequality in policing. The 30-minute window for crisis response and dependence on a request for a crisis intervention team will not alleviate the concerns about bias and brutality. George Floyd was dead in less than 10 minutes, and I can't help but wonder how this program would have helped with Miss Aleah Lewis. While addressing mental health concerns with compassion instead of incarceration is important, residents are asking for a solution that will value the lives and people of color more broadly. The Mayor Lieutenant Sanders mentioned that this is a pilot and that the details will be worked out. I have concerns about this approach from an academic and fiscal perspective. A recent article in Nature entitled "What the Data Says About Police Brutality and Racial Bias and Which Reforms Might Work" examined policy options associated with implementing changes, and quotes Professor Tom O'Brien from right here at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign about the potential to create further harm if a reform is taken without a thorough and thoughtful plan. O'Brien states that if police are to be of service to communities, they need to build trust with communities that are likely to distrust them, and that any half-hearted attempt at reconciliation could backfire. I worry that this well-intentioned effort may fall into this category of programs that could backfire. While I appreciate that this is a pilot, no grant that I have ever applied for locally or from a state or federal government would allow for a pilot that hasn't explored some basic points. Will this program address the issue? Will it supply another services? What is the whole plan, or the plan for funding it as a whole? What has been shared about the funding for this program is nebulous, and as has been previously raised, it is not reasonable to suggest that community members should pay for a program that does not have a long-term model for sustainability. The city invested considerable time and resource in a feasibility study for the Kikabu Rail Trail, but has jumped into this program without a similar level of consideration. The questions about CU at Home's accessibility to LGBTQ+ folks has also not been adequately addressed. In a previous council meeting, we were told that CU at Home hasn't turned anyone away. Just because they haven't turned people away doesn't mean that they are prepared to create an environment that is inclusive, clearly welcoming, and safe for LGBTQ+ folks. LGBTQ youth are disproportionately affected by homelessness, and the LGBT Resource Center at the university and individuals at Uniting Pride have been advocating for more responsive services for this population. I ask that the city think about a comprehensive plan for police reform and recognize that this program is not a solution to concerns about violent policing of people of color. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Tracy Chong?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. The agenda looks very sparse today, and I'm wondering why city council is not discussing the many issues that the public has been bringing up in the last year. Does city council have anything to say regarding the recent FOIA lawsuit that Urbana lost? Or is Mayor Marlin's dishonest press release going to be the only thing the city has to say regarding this issue? We are waiting. Have any of you guys reviewed the Taser incident, where it sure looked like there was misconduct, and UPD tried to not show the squad cam video that showed the incident? I've brought this up several times over the past few weeks, but I've never heard any acknowledgement that you guys are aware of the issue, or even looked at the video. Are you guys waiting for another UPD police brutality incident to be recorded by the public so that it can blow up in your faces? We are still waiting for a discussion about the misconduct when Aleah Lewis was assaulted by UPD officers. It's a new year, and so far, there has still not been any formal statement about the misconduct, no discussion on how this misconduct happened, what went wrong with the review process, and what steps are being done to fix this problem. Why? What about Carol Mitten's letter to the HRC, saying that the city, under her direction, is going to ignore the determination of the board during a recent hearing where the panel unanimously decided that the city's hiring practices needs to comply with the human rights ordinance with regards to discriminatory hiring practices? Is this issue going to be addressed? Why is the council silent on this matter? It's a big deal. Since the One Door Policy has been postponed, presentation has been postponed, hopefully with all that extra time, the concerns brought up by the public regarding this new program are addressed, and that city council members are using this extra time to research these concerns so that you can ask meaningful questions to the Urbana Police Department. It is a new year. Is city leadership still going to continue down the path of dishonesty? We are not forgetting all the dishonest statements regarding FOIA requests. So, what's going to change? Are you guys, officials elected by the people to ensure proper governance, going to take some responsibility for keeping the right track, keeping on the right track this year? Thank you.
Next up is Megan McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, all right. Hello, city council, my name is Megan McDonald, and I'm from Ward 5. My pronouns are she, they. I came tonight to speak about a few things, nothing too long or specific. I want to mention from the meeting two weeks ago that I was happy about the resolution proposed by Miller and Roberts about gender-inclusive language. It's important in a workplace, a government, schools, so thank you for taking the time and consideration to make this change. My second point, I also want to express my disappointment with the meeting two Mondays ago. Deborah Liu brought up this point, and I'd like to bring it up once more. When you turn off your cameras, we can't see you, so we actually have no verification at all if you're actually present at the meeting. I understand if it's like for a minute or two, these Zoom meetings are long, the screen is really hard to look at for that long, but when citizen after citizen is speaking, and four or five of you out of seven is just a black square, does that comply with the Open Meetings Act? When are we going to go back to in-person meetings? Probably not for a really long time, so we need to make this better and make it as close to the real experience as we can get. And I doubt any of you would be holding a book, or a phone, or a piece of paper in front of your face while citizens are speaking. So give us your time, the citizens don't get paid to speak and spend their Monday nights like this, like you all do. And that just really frustrated me and felt super disrespectful for a council that spent most of the summer in this year, work, last year, working on how they could make public input, quote-unquote, more respectful. Number three, I want to point out the unfortunate Champaign County animal control incident that I'm sure everyone's heard about. It's reached the New York Post. It was a really sad incident, and I don't really want to get too much into it because I feel like the Champaign County Board meeting is going to hear enough about it, and really, y'all have nothing to do with it. But I just want to bring up that historic, the Historic Easter Band Neighborhood Association in Ward 5. We kind of already deal with dogs in a way that excludes animal control, and I couldn't help, we post on the Facebook page, we ask our neighbors, we go around asking people, like, is this your dog? We don't ever, people don't call animal control because we just knew that things like this happened. And I couldn't help but think of how this is an alternative to policing, in a way, and how no one has ever seemed to question it, we just know that it's a safer option. Number four, speaking of HUNA, the Historic Easter Facebook group, Ward 5, did the city council give any more consideration to the air quality testing kits as far as a musk coat goes? It's one thing to believe a corporation, and it's another thing to listen to the citizens you represent. I'm assuming if the city doesn't sponsor some air quality testing kits, the people of Ward 5 will fundraise for them themselves. And if that happens and the results come back as expected, that will look really terrible for Urbana. So that's just a thought that you might want to consider in the future, when you're discussing Ward 5. You might want to consider co-sponsoring some air quality testing kits. I can email Dennis some of the ones my neighbors have recommended. And then number five, I'd like to piggyback on what Chris brought up about the new appointee for the Citizen Police Review Board. As far as the research goes, these committees and subgroups and avenues of reform have been proven to not work as far as police accountability and transformative justice. As far as years of abolition versus reform work, we need to look at Urbana CPRB now. When has this worked? Is Tony Rice sincerely invested in police accountability, or is this just another empty nomination? Is this board even useful, or can we figure out ways to create accountability, such as through the police union contracts? Thanks.
Next up is Bo Barber.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't have any of the data right now, because it's only January 4th, but by January 15th, we'll have the data for water shut-offs across the state of Illinois. But that hasn't already, and I brought this up to y'all on the last meeting. You know, water shut-offs are still being carried out, like, in the hundreds every single month since, what, October? That's going to be a perpetuating problem that's gonna, you know, we're, we're already seeing that Christmas spike of COVID, and pretty, like, in about two weeks or so, we're going to see the New Year's spike of COVID. One thing that's going to be able to help prevent that community spread is having people not dehoused because of, because of water disconnections. And I say dehoused because, like, Champaign, City of Champaign government told me themselves, you know, if a house doesn't have water, or they're, you know, how that ends up working out is they don't end up getting that water back soon enough, or I think even at all, they can just shut, they condemn the, they condemn the property, and then those people can get evicted. And so, you know, but that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily go against any kind of eviction moratorium. And on that topic, I strongly advise that you sign that eviction moratorium open letter, because, you know, we have court cases going on right now. Now, whether or not people are going to be evicted by the end of it, I don't know, but this is one of the times where, you know, it's, this is not a place to be messing around and finding out the consequences. Just like how people shouldn't be messing around during the pandemic, going to large gatherings, parties, you know, and not wearing masks, and not taking any kind of precautions, this is not the time to be messing around and finding out. And that also goes for city government and how things are run. You, you know, I appreciate, for those of you that signed the letter back in March, for, for, you know, the open letter on utility shut-offs, and calling, you know, calling for an end to utility shut-offs. And again, I'm going to ask that, you know, you sign on to that letter for the evictions moratorium open letter, because that's, that's the same kind of principles that you displayed in that previous letter, that I think, you know, it's, consistency is important, and also, this is, you know, we need to help people however we can. And I'm going to be a broken record on this, because it's, 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 it makes me mad. You know, I mean, Illinois American Water, they're, they, you know, they're not sending the CUP, the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, any notification whatsoever, and they cite state statute, and, you know, like, well, Amaran only had to do that because they're a power utility company, and that's what the state statute tells them, but we don't have to follow that. Pardon my language, but to hell with that. People are going to be, people are going to die because of this, and people are, you know, are going to lose their kids because of this. If they have small children in the home, there are mothers who are pregnant, like, they are like, they are like two-thirds of the way in to their pregnancy. There's one that just got disconnected over in Champaign, you can listen to the, I think it's what, Where We're At, the Ben Theobald Radio Show. I don't know where you can maybe find it, I think it is a SoundCloud space that you can look in it and listen to it. It's, it's disturbing, and it's incredibly upsetting. There's a woman who's, like, I think, what, she's, I can't remember what she said, she's over, she's over 28 weeks into her pregnancy, and she has two children, a one-year-old and a two-year-old. She's lost her water, she's already living in low-income housing. So I, I please advise, or not advise, I'm pleading for you to do anything you can on this to get American Water to cooperate, but thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, city council, this is Sarah Nixon, Champaign County resident, and a few thoughts that I would like to share. First of all, I would like to commend and thank Alan Max Axelrod for his comments on interactions between members of the community and the police that turn out to be re-traumatizing and revictimizing for the community member. I know that his example did not relate to the Urbana Police Department, and I wanted to, to comment, and I, and I will very likely comment at a future point, whether in, at a public input session at city council meetings, or in another format, more extensively on my own personal experience and insight with the Urbana Police Department, which parallels what Mr. Axelrod was speaking of. Unfortunately, I have extensive experience with the Urbana Police Department, and I will not go into it or detail it right now, but I will offer one, one example from my own personal experiences. Again, that echo, that mirror what Alan was talking about. My car was vandalized repeatedly in 2015. There were repeated incidents of vandalism targeting my car. I approached the Urbana Police Department the first time it happened, and I was treated dismissively. I was treated as, as if, first of all, as if it hadn't happened. I was told a branch probably keyed my car. And at the time, I was naive and not informed enough to even understand that there is a process when you are trying to report something, an officer should actually write it down, and a report should be written or entered. I wasn't aware of that. To this day, I assume nobody wrote it down, because the officer laughed at me. And when the second incident happened, where my rear window wipers were stolen, and then the third incident, which involved a flat tire, again, all three incidences quite suspicious, and I knew who had most likely done them, that person had described doing such things, and potentially doing such things had previously described that to me. I didn't approach the police, because I didn't want to put myself through the experience of being ridiculed again, of being treated as though I were wearing a tinfoil hat, and of dealing with people who clearly had no clue and no training about how domestic violence works, partner abuse works, and how abusive partners intimidate and control and perpetuate abuse through various means. I've learned a lot since those days. And again, I will address this elsewhere at more length. I'm sharing this because I know my story is not the only one, I know I'm not alone in having had that terribly revictimizing and traumatizing experience of gaslighting. I recognize that I'm out of time. I want to thank others who spoke tonight, they actually touched on points that I had wanted to make. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's everyone who wanted to speak tonight. Grace, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Grace Wilkin, I'm an Urbana resident of Ward 6, and I just wanted to echo the previous comments and say that I hope that you're listening to the public comments. Sometimes, we say the same things at multiple meetings over and over, because they clearly aren't addressed, sometimes, oftentimes even at all. And rather than truly listening to and addressing public concerns, you've limited public input and have still yet to meaningfully act on most of the public concerns and requests. It seems to me like, you know, there's a lot of big-picture issues that are going to take a lot of work that also aren't happening. But there's also simple things that could be done, like having a more transparent system, and not blocking access to records and FOIA requests, holding police accountable, like investigating complaints and reporting officer offenses, and having consequences for those offenses, not pressing charges or supporting the system pressing charges against victims of the system. As far as gender-neutral language, I'm glad that that resolution passed the first round. There's really simple things- There's really simple things that could be done at no cost and very little work, like using your pronouns in your Zoom names and using gender neutral language, not Mr. and Mrs. or older men like we have been doing. And overall, I just encourage you to work for the public and to vote and speak in our best interests. And please listen to this really valuable input that you're getting from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of the Standing Committee, Jared Miller.
Give me just a moment. All right. So we passed out one resolution under a regular agenda from our last meeting, and that was Resolution Number 2020-12-069R. Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a new cable franchise agreement with Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio LLC. And on behalf of the committee, I move for approval of that resolution.
And I'll second.
By Jared, seconded by Bill Colbert. Any discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I know you had, we had a question from Daryl Cruz. I thought it was a reasonable question about how the lower fee for equipment, I forget which fee that's called, the one that's being reduced from 2% to 0.75, I think it was.
The peg fee.
How that would affect the budget. And, and you provided a pretty thoughtful answer to that. Did you want to just, could, would you be able to summarize that briefly?
I'm going to defer to Jason Liggett to respond to that. He did all the work in, in the negotiation and I think he can give you a more complete answer than even I did.
Yeah, so the, as you noted, it went from 2% to 0.75%. This is roughly going to be around $41,000 per year estimated right now. As far as the, that drop, that was one of the things that was negotiated between us and Comcast. We had several back and forth conversations about the peg fee as well as the fifth channel, which are intertwined at spots. One thing that we've noticed throughout the years here, you know, we, we first negotiated that 2% over 25 years ago. And what we've seen is that, you know, the price of running a peg station has gone down considerably over the years. Equipment's much more streamlined than what it was before. So staff laid out a couple of different scenarios. If UPTV and the city were to continue running public access, education access and government access all in one channel, we went ahead and looked out 10 years, what our equipment needs would be and what sort of equipment we'd be purchasing and totaled that up. And we also looked at the scenario as if we did have another organization running a fifth peg channel. And we looked at the costs that would be associated with that. And ultimately we settled on the 0.75%, which is what the city counter offered Comcast's first proposal. I will just state, you know, Dural's main concern that, you know, that might not be adequate funding for, you know, if there was a fifth standalone peg channel. But all the numbers that we've come by have supported that it would be adequate funding for capital purchases.
Do you happen to know how, how much is being brought in by the fee from like, from the other cable providers, the other television service providers that go into that same pot of money?
It's minimal compared to Comcast. I think it's, you know, probably less than 20 grand a year right now between I-3 broadband and AT&amp;T. The bulk, the bulk of that money comes in from Comcast.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing we, we did observe is that things have changed drastically in the past 25 years about people's ability to produce their own videos and just the number of options like YouTube and all that has, has just exploded. So, so there are a whole lot more options for individuals to get content out on, out to the world than there were 25 years ago as well. So.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Jared. Reports of special committees. Seeing none. Reports of officers.
If staff doesn't have anything, I did want to brief you on one thing. It wasn't brought up tonight, but we have had comments in, in previous weeks about complaints filed over our Open Meetings Act. And I finally had a couple of minutes over the last week to, to compile a list of the complaints that have been filed with the Attorney General's Office alleging, or alleging violations of Open Meetings Act. And most of these complaints have been related to the public input processes at meetings beginning in March when we went virtual to November. So at this point, there have been 11 complaints filed with the Attorney General's Office. Five were filed by one person, another five were filed by another, and one complaint was filed by a third person. I would also note that a lawsuit has been filed against the mayor and the Urbana City Council over five meetings. And three of those meetings were also subject of the complaints with the Attorney General's Office. At this point, the Attorney General's Office has ruled on two of the 11 complaints. So that's two of the 11 meetings that were complained about. And in both cases, the Attorney General's Office found that the city of Urbana did not violate the Open Meetings Act. Those cases have been closed. The other complaints for later meetings are pending, as is the lawsuit. And then another note, we did some research. People have made some note about jaywalking tickets and a statistic was quoted during public comment a couple of times and referred to a statistic of 90% of tickets were issued to African-Americans. Best as we can determine, this, this particular statistic came from a 2012 article in The Atlantic where the reporter looked at a five-year period from 2007 to 2011. Just for your own information, in the past three years in the city of Urbana, there's been a total of one citation. And there's actually not a jaywalking ticket. Those, those citations are actually a violation of the traffic code and it's called pedestrian in the street. But anyway, there was one citation issued in the past three years and that was on September 15th, 2018 at 1:00 in the morning. And it was in, for being in Route 130 out by Walmart in East Urbana. And we went back and we looked at that five-year period that this article, we believe, was focused on. And there was a period of time, and I remember this as a council member, there's a period of time when groups of people were gathering in the streets, especially over by Learman Avenue, Hunter, Austin, and that area, and also around Sunnycrest. Because I got phone calls as a council member from residents who were very concerned, especially when this was happening at night. It was dark. Not, not around Sunnycrest, but over in the Hunter, Learman, Austin area. And people were afraid they were going to hit somebody in the street. So, so the, there was a like a year or two where there's, that was a problem. And since then, it has not been. But anyway, the last three years, there's been one citation issued for pedestrian in the street and that was out on Route 130. So I just wanted to follow up on that. Okay, last item on this agenda is under new business and it's an appointment to the Civilian Police Review Board. This is for a term ending on June 30th, 2022. And I bring to your, to your, for your consideration, the appointment of Anthony Tony Rice. He's a 20-year resident of Champagne County, 10-year resident of Urbana. He serves as a manufacturing manager at the Guardian West Division of Flexing Gate in Urbana. His role is as the plating and polish process supervisor. He supervises two shifts of approximately 45 people each. He has to maintain a productive work environment and he navigates language and cultural differences among employees, helps them resolve issues to reach a common goal. And that goal is to produce a high-quality end product. He requires listening, understanding different perspectives, open and honest dialogue, and recognizing that life experiences that people bring to the job have an impact on their internal work environment. And those observations that, and those were observations that he made to us during the interview process. And it struck me that those were the kinds of qualities that we look for in a member of the civilian police review board. And I believe that Anthony Rice will bring a valuable perspective to the CPRB. Participating in the interview has been in the past, and it was true this time, the Chair of the CPRB, Ricardo Diaz, plus Chief Seraphin and myself. When Mikhail Lubiansky was a co-chair, he participated in previous interviews. And I've scheduled an interview with another applicant next week. And so we'll see how that one, how that one proceeds. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, to accept the nomination.
Dennis, is there a second?
I'll second.
Who was that?
Bill.
Bill? Bill Brown. Okay. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
How many open seats do we have on the civilian review board?
I believe we have one more.
Okay.
I could be wrong. Jared?
As Christopher had mentioned, it is his public input comment, I was also surprised about, you know, the lack of information about, you know, how this person plans to involve themselves in this in a way that was relevant to it. I mean, it sounds like a nice job application. And to be qualified to do some, some good stuff in manufacturing and lead a team that in, in there. But, you know, the terms of one's employment experience doesn't really, in my mind, generally perfectly equate to, you know, why you would want to serve on this board. Did he make any mention of that or statement? He's, I don't, didn't see that he was in attendance tonight to talk to us about this at all.
He expressed, as, as most applicants do to our boards and commissions, he expressed an interest in serving the community. And this particular board was of interest to him. And like I said, you know, there are no specific qualifications outlined in the civilian police, for the civilian police review board, or actually for any other boards and commissions as far as I know. So we don't have a set of criteria or specific job qualifications when we're considering people for the position. But in a, in this board, what struck me was his experience in working with different populations. People who speak different languages, come from different countries and have different experiences. Mr. Rice is African-American. I thought that was an important factor. And I think he can bring a willingness and to be open-minded and consider issues from all perspectives.
Okay, just curious, just because there was not much about his interest in it, in the application. And I know we don't require, require that by any means, and I'm not suggesting that we should. Just interested that there wasn't, wasn't a lot in there about it. So I want to know, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
That motion passes. And with no further business before this meeting, rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council is adjourned and we'll move on to the committee of the whole meeting.